Good evening, everyone. Over to the March 13th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Call the roll, please.
Sure.
Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Weed.
President.
Sierra Messenger.
President.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meetings. We've got a couple of minutes tonight. We have them for January 23rd, February 13th, and February 27th. Are there any changes to those minutes that anyone would propose?
Make motion we approve the minutes for January 23rd, February 13th, and February 27th.
We have motion approved. There are second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dispost? Minutes are approved. All right, move on to old business. First item up is ordinance 2023-02. This is a New Cold Phase 2 bond. This ordinance is on second reading. Don't think we have been tonight, or I guess Rob, may I have you introduce this for us?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, this is New Cold Phase 2, which we've discussed before. This is New Cold's Phase 2 expansion, which again is going to be an approximately 300,000 square foot expansion to its existing facility. It is, the total investment by New Cold is going to be estimated to be in excess of $210 million. The bond proceeds in an amount not to exceed $12 million, and as well as a debt service reserve if necessary. No public works or services are going to be paid for by the government, and it's all set forth in the documentation that you've received before. So I'll go ahead and read the ordinance in second reading. This is ordinance 2023-02, and it's a taxable economic development revenue bond, Series 2023, for New Cold Project Phase 2. Whereas the city has previously issued taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2021, for the New Cold Project dated June 30th, 2021, in the original aggregate principal amount of $8,989,000. Those are defined as the Series 2021 bonds. In order to secure the Series 2021 bonds, Lebanon Redevelopment Commission adopted Resolution 2020-06, an original pledge resolution, which pacts all the incremental property taxes generated in the allocation area, and that's defined as tax increment. Whereas New Cold Indianapolis LLC, or one of its affiliates, has advised the city and the Lebanon Economic Development Commission that it proposes the city to issue taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2023, for New Cold Project Phase 2, or the Series 2023 bonds. And one more series, and it will also pursuant to Indiana law, need to amend and restate the trust indenture, which you've received copies, as well as the bond purchase agreement. And the Series 2023 bonds shall be issued in the aggregate principal amount, again not to exceed $12 million. And this is all for the construction, acquisition, installation, and equipping of an approximate 300,000 square foot expansion to the existing New Cold facility, again which consists of highly automated large-scale cold storage warehousing, including administrative offices serving the local and regional cold storage needs. Whereas the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission has amended the original pledge resolution in order to modify the pledge of the pledged tax increment to be pledged to pay the debt service of the 2023 bonds. Whereas the financing of a portion of the project results in the diversification of industry, the creation and retention of jobs, the creation and retention of business opportunities in the city. Whereas on March 13th, 2023, earlier today, the Economic Development Commission conducted a public hearing in accordance with the Act in Indiana Code and adopted its resolution in finding that the financing of a portion of the cost of the project complies with the purposes and provisions of Indiana law, that such financing will be a benefit to the health and general welfare of the city, and the project will not have a material adverse competitive effect on similar facilities already constructed or operating in the city. Whereas there's been submitted to this council, an amended and restated financing agreement between the city and the company. Number two, an amended and restated trust indenture. Number three, a bond purchase agreement, and all these are defined as the financing documents as well as this bond ordinance. Therefore, it is hereby found, determined, ratified, and confirmed that the financing and reimbursement of economic development facilities referred to in the financing documents, and the issuance and the sales of the 2023 bonds, and the provisions of the net proceeds are up to the company to finance a portion of the project will result, again, in diversification in industry, the creation or retention of business opportunities, and the creation or retention of opportunities for gainful employment within the jurisdiction of the city. Number two, it will serve a public purpose and will be of benefit to the health and general welfare of the city. Number three, that it will comply with the purposes and provisions of Indiana law, and it is in the public interest that the city takes such lawful actions as determined to be necessary or desirable to encourage the diversification of industry, the creation and retention of business opportunities, and the creation or retention of opportunities for gainful employment. Number four, not have a material adverse competitive effect on similar facilities already constructed or operating in or near the city. Section 2 addresses the proposed financing of a portion of the project and the financing of the costs related to it, including capitalized interest by the issuance of the Series 2023 bonds under the Act, are in the form that such financing was approved by the Redevelopment Commission and it's hereby approved. Section 3, the city is hereby authorized to issue the Series 2023 bonds in the aggregate principal amount, again not to exceed $12 million, which shall be designated as taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2023, or the New Cold Project Phase 2. They will be executed at a prior to the closing date by signatures of the mayor and the clerk treasurer of the city. They will be dated as of the issuance, mature on a date not later than the date, latest date in the pledged tax increment, and will bear an interest rate not to exceed 9%. The mayor and clerk treasurer are hereby authorized, directed in the name and on behalf of the city to sell the 2023 bonds to a purchaser or purchasers as selected by such officers. The 2023 bonds and the interests do not and shall never constitute debt or charge against the general credit or taxing power of the city, but shall be special and limited obligations of the city payable as to principal and instrument interest from the pledged tax increment generated from the allocated area. The substantial final forms of financing documents presented at this meeting are hereby approved and are by reference incorporated into this bond ordinance. The mayor and the clerk treasurer of the city and each of them are authorized and directed in the name and on behalf of the city to execute or endorse any and all other agreements that will be in, satisfy the purpose of this bond ordinance. The provisions of this bond ordinance and the financing documents shall constitute a binding contract between the city and the holders of the Series 2023 bonds. This bond ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Rob. So for those watching at home in the audience, just a clarification on what exactly is happening here tonight. So again, New Cold is planning a Phase 2 expansion, again estimated $210 million investment in the city of Lebanon. If it wasn't for Eli Lilly, this would be the number one largest investment ever in the city of Lebanon. So essentially, instead of us offering any type of tax incentive, we're doing this developer-backed bond essentially. So they're purchasing their own bonds, their own projects. So we're offering this essentially $12 million to essentially attract $210 million essentially is the conversation we're having here tonight. So put in layman's terms, still a very good deal for the city of Lebanon. Of course, bringing the high-paying jobs that we've been trying to continuously trying to attract for the last few years as well, too. So any questions from council for Rob or myself as this is moving forward?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning ordinance 2023-02? Seeing none, and pending any further questions or comments from council, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve ordinance 2023-02.
We have a motion to approve. There are second?
Second.
Second from Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dispost? That ordinance passes to you. I'd say thank you, council, and welcome New Cold Phase 2. That'd be a great project for us. That concludes what I have for old business. Is there any from council?
No, sir.
Okay. New business then. First item up is a street department. This is a discussion tonight. This isn't a noticed appropriation. This is just Dave talking about some things that are on his agenda coming up or radar, some of the county that wanted to bring forward to council to maybe potentially consider a initial appropriation at a future date. So go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, we just need to replace our hot box. It's a 2012. We tried to budget for it this year, and obviously we had to cut some things out, and that was one of the things we had to cut out. So we're just looking for about $42,371.98. It's going to be a little bit less because they're going to trade in our other one. We just didn't get a price on it yet. But we had it going through last winter and this, the beginning of this winter, and they told us then it probably wasn't going to make it. But we tried to piece it together, but every time we take it out, the thing breaks down. So, and we ain't even in the hot mix season yet. So they said it'd take us about 30 days to get this piece of equipment, so we're just trying to ask for help to get it.
Have you considered funding source for it? Are you thinking MVH, LRS, general fund?
We looked through all of ours, and we don't have anything at all to purchase it ourselves.
So maybe just general fund then?
Yeah. Well, I talked to Tanya, I guess, about food and beverage money.
We discussed food and beverage.
Yeah.
I mean, there's 1.3 million there right now. So it's, I mean, did you talk, you talked to the council?
Yeah, I sent them all the information, and I told them I'd talk to you and give them your number you gave me, so.
That's a possibility.
Okay, so yeah, so we could directly use food and beverage as well as if we wanted to fund it tonight, or go through an additional preparation process and go through the general fund.
Yeah, I don't want to rush anybody, but it is something that we kind of use a lot and we need, so. And it will take a delay to get it.
Is that season coming up?
Yeah, we're using it now.
Okay, all right.
I did see an email, but that is a new one, is that correct? Yes, and that's municipality discounts for us. I mean, that's just probably actually a $60,000 piece of equipment, but.
What's the turnaround time in receiving it?
They told me about 30 days. That's why we're trying to get it done because we're kind of stopped now, so.
Well, I think we ought to, can we move forward tonight with it?
If it's out of food and beverage, we could because we, you know, we budget the half a million dollars in food and beverage if we wanted to do that, or if we prefer to take it out of the general fund per se, we could do, can we do additional preparation now, starting to?
Well, we can start the process.
We could start the process, but.
It'll take a while.
April, probably?
Take 10, yes.
Yeah, so really that kind of would just, it put it on our next meeting, right? So we're kind of probably looking at April before we can officially say, go get it. So it's just kind of.
You won't get it till May.
Right.
So, you know, I'm okay with doing, I'm okay with using food and beverage.
We didn't want to soon. Right, we just wanted to bring it forward and.
I know we've got 499,000 left from this year, and we can afford it, and he needs it, so I'm for it right now.
Additional comments, concerns from council? Dick, Brent, anything you guys need to?
Well, we're just discussing merits of food and beverage. We do have a lot of money sitting there. We've also committed a lot of that money, so I'm not sure.
Again, that's why I wanted to bring it forward. So it's just a matter of.
Well, they use it to fix potholes.
Right.
And they don't get it until May, you know.
Yeah, we're only paving, I think, two miles this year, so keep that in mind.
I'd say we take it out of food and beverage.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, I make a motion that we purchase the hot box out of the food and beverage fund.
Was not to exceed 43,000 cover it, right?
Yeah, because 42,371.98 is what it is, but we're supposed to take a little bit off for our trade-in. It's just not on this paper.
Not to exceed $43,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Second?
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Kind of.
I'm not a guest. They need it, no question about that, so.
Just a matter of what fund, right?
Yes.
All right, motion second. All in favor say aye.
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 Dispost? Okay, that is approved. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Rob.
Okay, next, speaking of food and beverage, we have food and beverage requests from Lebanon Middle School, Lebanon High School, cross-country track and field programs. Matt Wilson, John, just turn it over to you from the Food and Beverage Committee.
Matt Wilson will be our guest speaker.
Fair enough.
Hi, I'm Matt Wilson. I'm representing the Lebanon Middle School and High School cross-country track teams regarding the annual Big Run that we host for the elementary school running clubs, where all four elementary schools, the Lebanon School Corporation, the running clubs come together for one big event where we'll have approximately 180 students in total, and somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe 500, 600 spectators there at the middle school watching their child or children run a 3K. We're doing it to, for a couple reasons. One, to get kids more interested in running, and two, just to really promote a healthy lifestyle and exercise, so.
Okay, that's it?
I'm trying to think what else, what other information you'd like.
We start with Matt made a presentation to the Food and Beverage Committee on Tuesday, February 28th at 5:00 PM. The program actually is called the Big Run. It is sponsored or encouraged by the Lebanon High School and Lebanon Middle School cross-country and track teams. Is that correct?
Correct.
Started in 2017. We were a past sponsor of this event. This is the sixth year of the program. They average about 170 kids. Last year, they had 180 kids or participants. I probably should say participants. It's a way of getting our youth involved physically and getting out and being involved in the schools and getting out and getting exercise and things like that. So the Food and Beverage Committee made, had a meeting, and we had a positive suggestion for the council for tonight.
What was the amount recommended? Would you like to make a recommendation?
Sure.
And what's the money used for?
The funds that we, the funds will be used for, each child gets a shirt. We have a professional timing, timer come in, and we also offer awards for the school that finishes first overall as a team, and then individual awards at the third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade level for both the boys and girls.
Okay, thank you.
And they had all four Lebanon elementary schools represented in the event.
Who won last year?
I believe.
Just curious.
Central won one of the grades, and then, or one of them, and I think Harney won the other. I think.
Just curious. Okay, we have a motion out there from Sierra. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Brent. All in favor say aye.
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 Dispost? That is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, next item up, update memorandum of understanding right-of-way improvements associated with the LEAP Lebanon Innovation and Research Park. This is for Phase 1. Kevin Kriech.
Thank you very much, and good evening. Just to update you, previously this evening we held a Board of Works meeting. This agreement was before the Board of Works, as this does involve our public work system, and the Board of Public Works and Safety is the contracting authority for the city of Lebanon. So this has been, excuse me, forwarded to you on behalf of the Board of Works. Their approval was contingent on final engineering approval, final legal approval, city council approval, and they did previously authorize the mayor to execute this agreement once those subsequent approvals were obtained. So with that, I will make a presentation on what is involved in the MOU, what is included, and the purpose behind this. Let's start with purpose. Really, you know, this is a memorandum of understanding, and this is to govern right-of-way improvements associated with the LEAP District, the Lebanon LEAP Innovation and Research Park Phase 1 project, probably barely known as the area around the Eli Lilly development. Essentially, these are transportation improvements that are bound by the borders of I-65, State Road 47, State Road 39, and County Road 300 North. This is a memorandum that would be entered into by the city of Lebanon and the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. There's a lot of legal terms in this, so I just want to let you know I am really just focusing on the paragraphs associated with infrastructure. This is the main part of the agreement, and really we'll start off in paragraph 1 with road improvements. I should back up a minute. You might have saw a draft, you would have saw a draft of this memorandum on Friday shortly before the Board of Works meeting earlier today. You would have saw a revised agreement. So we spent the better part of today working with the mayor's office, working with Rob and some of his associates, as well as the IEDC and the development team to work through some of the details. So earlier today, you would have received a revised agreement as well as a document that is tracking the changes from the agreement that you received on Friday when the agendas were distributed. So without further ado, I'll get into the road improvements. First off, we have some clarifying statements on road improvements, that all road improvements are subject to applicable local city and county approvals and permitting requirements. Again, you know, I want to remind everyone, most of these road improvements that we were talking about are county roads. But again, to accommodate a development like Lilly, we need to see those off-site roads improved to accommodate the increases in traffic and make sure the infrastructure can accommodate the project. So there are eight specific road projects that I will outline for you that are in the agreement. Item number one, numeral I, is North Writ Road. This is from State Road 47, south to County Road 450. This is to be reconstructed and widened to provide two asphalt travel lanes, shoulders, and necessary drainage improvements. One of the comments from Board of Works that we will be adding into this agreement is that we'll also make a note that this includes bridge improvements associated with the county-regulated bridge structures. The next item is County Road 450 from Writ Road to the Eastern Bypass. As you remember, is part of the vacation process. That required the creation of an eastern bypass. So this is that section from Writ Road over to that bypass, which is just a few hundred feet east of the railroad tracks. This will involve reconstruction and widening, two asphalt paved lanes, shoulders, necessary drainage improvements, and all the, you know, associated improvements with that widening and reconstruction project. There's also a note in the agreement that it is not intended for County Road 450 North to be used as a construction access drive for the construction employees, or the final employees for Lilly. The next item, item three, is County Road 450 North from the Eastern Bypass east to State Road 39. This states that that existing road will be overlaid with asphalt. It's an existing gravel road, so that will be upgraded to an asphalt road. Next one, item four, is Lower Simmons Road or County Road 375 North from the CSX Railroad Crossing east to State Road 39. This existing road will be reconstructed, widened, two asphalt lanes will be provided in addition to shoulders, turn lanes, necessary roadside, unnecessary roadside drainage. There's also a further clarification here that additionally, although the traffic modeling for the Lilly site, the first phase of the LEAP project, does not warrant a signal at State Road 39 and 375, that turning maneuvers and traffic volumes will be, continue to be monitored for the eventual future installation of that signal once the data provides the warrant that is needed. Keep in mind that any signal, any improvement on state right-of-way would require that warrant be met, and we cannot show that that warrant is to be met with the current projects proposed, and the state doesn't allow you to really look at speculative warrant analysis. So again, we will continue to monitor that intersection for future signalization. Item five, Lower Simmons Road, County Road 375, yes?
Item four, that also includes the bridge section.
Yes, it does, thank you. Similar to item one.
Sure.
Item four, eastern County Road 375 North, there is a small structure there that will be replaced with a bridge structure per the county's requirements. Let's see, back to item five, staying on Lower Simmons Road, County Road 375 North. This is from Writ Road to the CSX Railroad Crossing. That road will be reconstructed as well, widened, an asphalt lane in each direction, landscape medians, middle turn lanes, shoulders, turn lanes, multi-use paths, required and necessary roadside drainage improvements, sidewalks, et cetera, all included on that. In addition, that there will be a curve placed in the road from Writ Road on to 375 that will be designed to the appropriate design curve standards for urban criterias. Item six, South Writ Road. This is from Lower Simmons Road, County Road 375 North, south to County Road 300 North. Again, reconstructed, widened, one asphalt travel lane in each direction, landscape median, shared middle turn lanes, shoulders, required turn lanes, multi-use paths, and roadside drainage improvements. Project seven, County Road 300 North from Writ Road to State Road 39. This one requires, I guess, a little bit more of a broad-brush approach, as we do not know exactly where the new interchange will be built. We know INDOT is committed to building an interchange. We know we have a preferred location, but the final location is yet to be determined. So this involves that road east of the interchange project. We know the interchange project will at least go to Writ Road. So this agreement specifically states that it will widen, the road will be widened and reconstructed by INDOT and/or IEDC per INDOT and federal highway standards within one year of the completion of the new interchange project, and this may include intersection improvements on 300 North, as well as appropriate railroad crossing upgrades. Again, once railroad, once warrant is determined for the railroad crossing, that would be upgraded. That may include, this is not part of the agreement, but that may include a grade-separated crossing, meaning the road will go over, or the railroad will go over, one or the other to avoid any crossing requirements there.
So we'll put that bridge back that took out there once.
Yes.
The bridge over the railroad tracks that you took out once, right?
Yeah. Historically speaking, there was a bridge over the railroad tracks, that location. Item eight is the eastern bypass that was contingent on the vacation of Writ Road between 375 and 450, east of the Lilly campus. This will be constructed in accordance with applicable city and/or county standards, including 30 mile per hour design speeds for all curves. Essentially, that will lengthen out those curves from what maybe was presented in exhibits associated with the vacation. Those will be wider, larger radiuses as opposed to what was previously presented. These turning radii will be designed to accommodate combines and semis that are using the road, and this will also then include, will include railroad crossing signals and full crossing gate arms on Lower Simmons Road, County Road 375, and the crossing at County Road 450 North. Full gate arms means. Full gate arms means that not just the oncoming lanes of traffic will be blocked by gate arms, but all four quadrants of a crossing. So makes it much more difficult, if not impossible, to go around the crossing arms when the crossing arms are completely covering both lanes of traffic. So now we get into some clarifying statements. All of the above road improvements that I mentioned will be built in accordance with applicable city and/or county standards, and will all be designed, again, we state this again, that it will be designed to accommodate farm vehicles and equipment. We have some statements here regarding the developer taking all reasonably commercial actions needed to acquire this right-of-way. This is not city, or the county, or the state responsible for acquiring that right-of-way. When I say the state, I mean INDOT. This is the IEDC required to take reasonable actions to accommodate the acquisition of the right-of-way. Further, it goes into a schedule that is set forth in Exhibit A3, that just outlines the construction phasing of the project, and this provision also states that all road construction must be done in accordance with applicable city and county ordinances regarding construction noise and the limits thereof. There's then a paragraph, paragraph, so that was paragraph one that I've just outlined, those are the improvements. Paragraph two outlines temporary improvements that are needed. Of course, with the amount of traffic for construction, temporary traffic improvements are needed. In fact, there'll be more traffic associated with construction than there will be on the final use of the site, at least in its Phase One completion. And that will include a temporary traffic signal. This is a stoplight at State Road 39 and Lower Simmons Road, County Road 375. That will be a primary construction access entrance for the development, and so for the purposes of construction, there will be a temporary signal. Again, there may be a warrant signal there placed at some point in the future, but for right now, a temporary signal to control traffic coming and going from the site, and those driving around the site, is important, and that is in this agreement. The other temporary signal that is in this agreement is at State Road 47 and Whit Road, again, a major access point for the project, and there is a need to better control that traffic, in addition to turn lanes that would be provided at 47 and Whit Road. These are exclusive of other temporary traffic accommodations that may need to be made on a site-specific basis. So there may be additional temporary traffic concerns that will have to be addressed by the other site development projects, but these two temporary signals at 39 and 375 and Whit Road and 47 are requirements for the state of Indiana. Paragraph three gets into what is called betterments. Betterments are, I would say, the more aesthetic and more recreational aspects to these projects. These include grade-separated multi-use paths, trails, County Road 150 West or Whit Road from 300 to 375. On 375, again, multi-use path from Whit Road to the railroad line. On 300 North, multi-use paths through that entire corridor as part of the INDOT or IEDC project, as the interchange becomes more clearly developed. This also includes things like wayfinding and identification signage, welcome to the LEAP district type of things. Plantings, paved surfaces, aside from the typical roadway surfaces, these may be specialty pavements or decorative pavements at intersections or crosswalks, granite curbs, rails, railings, public art, street furnishings, bus stops, there's no bus stops planned, but at some point in the future, there may be a need for more, a more robust public transportation system, and streetlights. Again, betterments are items that would be built within the right-of-way, but would be property and the maintenance responsibility of the developer. And there's a separate maintenance agreement that covers a lot of those things, that will be the next item on your agenda. Again, more provisions that these are all subject to applicable government approvals. There's a whole paragraph on road maintenance related to how they build, construct, dedicate, and then offer maintenance bonds for these road improvements to the applicable entity, whether that be the city or the county. And then there's another paragraph, paragraph five, that is potentially additional road improvements that are also documented in here, so that we have a clear understanding that these require further study. And that is additional paving along County Road 450 North, that is a future signal at 375 and 39, once warrant is there, and that would require the necessary improvements for queuing and passing lanes. And then County Road 300 North, again, as is yet to be defined, roundabout improvements at intersections, as well as a potential grade-separated crossing at the railroad, again, once warrant is there, that would require that. The rest of the paragraphs are really getting into a lot of the standard legal provisions regarding delays, discrimination, assignment, authorization, liability, waivers, things of that nature, that I would have to defer to Rob if you have questions on. But again, this was previously approved earlier this evening, subject to engineering review, legal review, city council approval, and authorizing the mayor to execute the document once those items have been addressed. What questions do you have?
Thank you, Kevin. Essentially, this is putting the state, putting it in writing of what we say, hey, if we're going to, Lilly's going to come, there's going to be backstreet roads, how do we mitigate those and make sure that the site flows well? And essentially, we're having to put that in writing, and we're all agreeing to it, essentially. Is that what this does?
Yes, this is a document that is meant to document expectations, intentions, from both parties, what we expect, what they intend to deliver, and yes, it is improvements that are not specific to Lilly. These are more improvements that are specific to Phase One of the LEAP district.
Okay. Thank you. Dick?
For Commissioner Lawson, who's here this evening. The county will be getting this same MOU, or similar MOU, for them, because these roads, majority of these roads are still in the county.
Correct.
And the bridges and everything, and colors and everything, they need, they're still going to need to, you know, have some under.
Correct, yes. Essentially, the only roads that are city roads are the roads immediately adjacent to the Lilly site.
Correct.
A small portion of Whit Road, and then a portion of 375 from Whit Road over to the railroad tracks. Those are now city streets.
450 North.
But, oh, and 450 North adjacent to the Lilly site. So all the other roads are county roads, county-maintained, require, this agreement says that they will obtain county permits and approvals for these improvements, and it is my understanding, yes, the county, I believe the county has already been delivered a maintenance agreement. I don't believe they have a MOU, but I have included the county officials, the county engineer, the county highway superintendent, in all these negotiations and machinations associated with this MOU, so that we're all on the same page of what should be included.
Okay, I'm going to ask another couple of questions I thought of earlier and didn't ask.
Sure.
Have to do with railroad crossing. My understanding, and tell me wrong if something's changed, but I believe that the lights for the railroad and so forth will belong to the city, or the county, or whatever, at the time to maintain. They don't belong to the railroad, I don't think, do they?
I was actually under a different understanding, but I will need to confirm this for you, that railroad crossing equipment is owned and maintained by the railroad company.
Okay.
Now, you have to permit, for permission, to have them even install it, and then once it's installed, it is the railroad company's responsibility to maintain it.
Well, it might have been the old ones where we used to have the crossings like this with a stop sign.
I think that's different, yeah.
Okay. My other question is, we all know the railroad.
Sure.
So is the railroad, are they, are they going to really repair their section of the railroad, or is that going to be up to us to repair that section of the railroad to maintain and take care of it? Because I could see us doing a really nice road coming up there, and them not fixing anything in between the tracks, and that's sometimes where it gets the worst.
Yeah. So similar to the crossing closures, this will require them to upgrade the crossing as well, the actual pavement crossing, the railroad tracks. But you're right, and maybe this was slightly different in your highway department days, but the right-of-way of the railroad company excludes county or city maintenance responsibilities. You can't just resurface the crossing of a railroad crossing without their permission. In fact, they would usually make their own contractors do it, if in the event it does need it. So the state is going to work through, and I understand they've had preliminary meetings with the railroad company to negotiate, I guess is maybe a word I'll use, these crossing upgrades that the city would require, and quite frankly, they want to have done, to make sure these crossings are safe. But those crossings, again, the pavement in the railroad right-of-way, the crossing arms, those are all property of the railroad company. I can't resurface a crossing in town if I wanted to.
We've been asked, and we can't.
We have been asked, and we communicate those issues with the railroad company all the time. But you're right, but no different than any other crossing anywhere in the county, and probably anywhere in the state for that matter, does the city control the pavement crossing a railroad.
Yeah. Well, I just want to make sure for us and the county that we make sure that IEDC stays on top of the CSX, that we don't want to fix everything and have something nice, and they take off, and, well, we'll get there, you know.
I agree, but in many cases, you're probably aware, the railroad companies pre-existed the state. So in a lot of ways, railroad companies are sovereign authorities in the US, so.
Probably is a challenge we have for them.
Yeah, it is a challenge, always a challenge.
Well, I would say that probably Lebanon doesn't have much leverage over the CSX corporation, but the state does, so.
Little more, yeah.
Yeah. They are regulated as a division of INDOT, but again, yeah, it's a difficult, difficult relationship. It's a complicated relationship, is probably a better word.
Initial questions for Kevin?
No, sir. Multi-use path, what, it's a big sidewalk, but what's.
Big sidewalk, most likely an asphalt path, you know, adjacent to, separated from the road.
Similar like the one up on 250 North, where Sunbrook is, there's kind of an asphalt path there instead.
Yep, good example.
Yep. Okay. Hey, Kevin? Is there any public comment concerning this memorandum of understanding? Further discussion, Councilor Council?
No, sir.
Okay. We entertain a motion then, concerning the memorandum of understanding, concerning the right-of-way improvements associated with the Lebanon LEAP Innovation and Research Park Phase One. Again, we'd like to make this motion contingent upon final legal and engineering review, and authorize myself to sign on the council's behalf.
Signing on the Board of Works' behalf.
Oh, Board of Works' behalf, I'm sorry, thank you.
And just one clarification, this has nothing to do with the county. If the county, for whatever reason, would decide not to take part of this agreement...
This is strictly between, this is strictly between the city and IEDC. The county will have their own agreement that they'll make with them.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not tying any of the county's hands with this agreement, correct?
Yeah.
Their motion?
I'll move, we approve the memorandum of understanding involving right-of-way improvements associated with the development of LEAP Lebanon Innovation and Research Park Phase One.
Pending final legal and engineering.
Pending final legal review and approval from the boards mentioned.
And engineering review.
And engineering.
And authorizing me to sign.
I should have this typed out. I didn't realize this was all.
We tried to tell you, yeah.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay.
So we said, motion second. Further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, that is approved. Thank you. Keith.
Keith.
Yep. Okay. Next is the right-of-way maintenance agreement, associated with the Lebanon LEAP district. Kevin?
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, similar to the memorandum of understanding, this item was on the agenda for the Board of Works earlier this evening, and they issued a conditional approval, subject to engineering review, legal review, city council approval, and authorizing the mayor to execute the document. And we're here tonight to try to tie up the city council approval. So again, this is a right-of-way maintenance agreement, again, between the city of Lebanon and the Economic Development Corporation. Different than the MOU, this is also has a third-party signatory on this agreement, and that is, and that is the county, Boone County, Indiana. So this agreement really focuses on the maintenance of what I defined earlier as betterments. Again, to remind you, these are sort of decorative or recreational-related improvements inside the right-of-way, and that's everything from wayfinding and identification signage, planning, landscaping, paths, crosswalks, curbs, or granite curbs, excuse me, wells, railings, public art, street scape furnishings, those may be trash receptacles, planters benches, tree grates, bowlers, bicycle racks, et cetera, bus stops, and street lighting. I'll go into a little more detail here. Again, these are items located in the right-of-way. They are to remain the property of the developer, but the city will, the city and/or the county will maintain our police powers associated with those public rights of way. We have the ability to approve, deny, reasonably modify the installation methods, determine the location, excuse me, determine the location and installation methods of any of the betterments for the purposes of right-of-way safety. And the developer has some little requirements for installing these betterments. And the city and/or county has applicable, has the right, and the responsibility, I should say, to issue applicable permits. Everything from, this gets into everything, everything from banners and wayfinding signage, that they should be maintained, applicable to the city and county codes. This gets into the city's and county's rights to our police powers, that we retain the right to remove betterments, if it's deemed necessary. We have some notice responsibilities associated with any removal, but we also have the ability to remove things in case of an emergency, should that come up. Again, but as things are removed, there are responsibilities for the city and/or county to reimburse and/or replace items. There's a whole paragraph on maintenance, replacement, and removal, and again, it is the developer's responsibility, the developer being the IEDC, to maintain the betterments, maintain them clean and free of graffiti and other, you know, nefarious things that may happen. The developer may also opt to remove things, or cause them to be repaired, if that is necessary. And again, the city, though, still has the right and the obligation to maintain other improvements in the rights of way, aside from the betterment. So we still have to remove snow, we still have to patch potholes, we still have to do the standard maintenance requirements of everything in the right-of-way, excluding the betterments. Again, the developer remains solely responsible for the maintenance of the betterments. Gets into some paragraphs here about landscaping, that the developer will be, at its sole cost expense, be maintaining the landscaping, that includes weed control, mowing, sod, plants, removals, replantings of any of the landscaping betterments within the rights of way. Sidewalks, the developer has the responsibility to maintain the sidewalks reasonably clear of debris and replace damaged sidewalks. The developer has the responsibility to remove snow and ice from sidewalks. This talks about trash service, that the developer shall be responsible for the receptacles. City and/or county will service trash receptacles pursuant to existing city or county schedules and servicing, as for the servicing of public trash receptacles. Streetlights, again, the developer's expense to maintain those. Electricity for the lighting, because it's a public safety issue, will be paid for by the appropriate city or county entity. entity. Developer has the right to transfer ownerships of streetlights, say, to a utility company if they so choose. And then it gets into a lot of issue, legal-related issues related to, you know, remedies in the interest of failures, restoration and repairs of items. I think, yeah, that basically covers it. The rest of the items are really sort of the enforcement criterias associated with these agreements. But again, this is an agreement for the maintenance of items that the developer would place within public rights of way, whether those be city, county, or state, for that matter. But the state is not a party to this agreement.
Any questions for Kevin on that?
No, sir.
Okay. Any public comment concerning this MOU? Excuse me, right-of-way agreement? Saying none. Further discussion, comments? Okay, then, would entertain a motion then, to approve the right-of-way maintenance agreement, associated with the LEAP Lebanon Innovation and Research Park, pending final legal review, engineering review, and authorizing the mayor to sign on behalf.
Make a motion that we approve the right-of-way maintenance agreement for the Lebanon LEAP Innovation District and Park, following legal review, engineering review, and allowing the mayor to sign off on it.
Perfect. Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved. That concludes all I have for me. Business, is there anything for council?
No.
Announcements?
Yes, the Lebanon Quanis 69th Annual Pancake Supper is coming up on April 13th, and it's from 5 to 8 o'clock. All the proceeds go to fund our children's programs at the middle schools, the elementary schools, the high schools, and a couple civic things that we do. So it's 5 to 8, tickets are 8 bucks, and you can get them from any Quanis member. I have some here, if you need some, and, or you get them at the door. April 13th.
Mike, any other announcements? Okay. Move on to claims. Would entertain a motion concerning claims. Motion to pay the claims, is there a second? Second from Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Claims are approved. Would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Motion adjourned, is there a second? And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Disposed. We are adjourned. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, March 27th, at 7:30 PM. Have a great night.